Good evening, everyone. Just confirming the recording's going, sounds like we're in shape. Do we have Melissa online? No, that's our consultant. Someone's at the door. Hey, Melissa. Thanks for joining. Okay, all right, so. First up is approval of agenda. Commissioner Kaye and Director Hoffman, and I had a chance to connect last week. And we wanted to discuss the agenda to include a new line for a new business. To ensure that us as the planning commission are talking about next items after comp plan. So hopefully we'll get to that today, but again, really wanna. Move forward as quickly as possible on other items that you know this commission wants to address. So hopefully we'll be able to address that today with the agenda. So more on that, but. Is there a motion right now to approve the agenda as reflected?
With that addition? With the addition?
Oh, it's it's in here.
It's in here, okay, okay.
A second?
Hi, sir.
All all in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you. Okay, so then next up. Also sent out last week was the July ninth meeting minutes, those were attached to the agenda. Were there any changes or items to discuss? And if not, we'd love a motion to. To look for approval.
Just one point where we, I think we were gonna need to land a little bit before the man. I had, this is the public agenda, we had it on there.
Okay. Do you wanna read the?
I'd be, I'd be glad to, thank you.
We'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and diverse group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the agenda?
Aye.
Okay, next date that we have in the books is September 10. That's our regular scheduled meeting. Does anybody have any issues with making that date? Are we all available?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Great. Melissa, are you able to join us? I see a head nod, yep. Cool. Alrighty. So. As you all are likely aware, we are weeks, months, quarters into working on the comp plan. And we're at a required periodic update of the existing comprehensive plan, which is required to be finalized at the end of this calendar year, so December 31st. As a reminder, the comp plan is a document that memorializes the community's vision for the future, and it sets goals and policies. For growth, infrastructure, and services needed to achieve the vision and align with the community's values and the priorities. So since 2015, which was our last periodic update, there's been some major legislative changes and also regional transportation plan requirement. Along with that new added element of climate. So with this commission, the planning commission here, we're comprised of Lake Forest Park residents, we're all volunteers. And we have collectively been working on the updated version of the comp plan and heavily relied on input from the broader community. A survey went back, went out to the community back in March. And the response was around 930 people had taken the survey and. Just last month, we had another follow-up, which was an open house held at Lake Forest Park Commons. And we'll get, we'll hear an update of what the results were at that point later on in the meeting. But in partnership with our consultant Christina, who you're seeing online and her team. We were able to engage with a handful of participants who shared their thoughts on the comp plan and major elements of the comp plan. So then that's what brings us here today, this next phase of the process, and it's to hold this public hearing. I see that we have a few folks joining with us today, and we welcome you to share your testimony for the record, so thank you for coming. From a structural standpoint, tonight, we will want to ensure that we have the opportunity to hear from. All three of you, if you would like, and we are gonna limit testimony to three minutes. So with that, Commissioner Kaye, he will be calling you up to the podium for your testimony. And I will take a breath to see if Director Hoffman, if you have any other. Comments you'd like to add?
Not prior to the hearing, thank you.
Great. So with that, we will open the public hearing. All right, I'm a little aggressive, I apologize.
Thank you. We have. First, we have Nigel Kiefer or Kiefer, apologize, Kiefer. Thank you. And you'll have three minutes, thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, kinda surprised you guys don't start with the pledge of allegiance. City Council always does, that's why I say that. It's just unusual. Okay, start off. The comprehensive plan update. Contains poison fruit. From a poison tree. The greeny academics and climate change zealots within the Climate Action Committee and Planning Commission. Have expressed their bias for the climate agenda and D E I ideology. By their goals of climate. Commitment, racial and social equity and environmental justice. The poison tree is the Growth Management Act, Goal 14. The 2003 Legislative House Bill 1181. King County C P P S. And the P S R C. Vision 2050. Where is the 20-year financing plan? Or the goals and visions? What will all these goals and visions cost? The taxpayers? What did your consultants Cascadia Consulting Group and S C J Alliance tell you? Some of the goals are reminiscent of Proposition 1. In 2021, which was rejected by the voters. The propaganda that the taxpayers of Lake Forest Park support climate extremism is false, and there is no evidence of it. Commission documents expose the deception such that goals should be an intentionally vague overview of the future vision. Climate change and D E I. Are false Marxist ideologies. A social engineering tool. Concocted to create division and chaos in our society, and that's what it's doing. And should not be part. It should not be part of any comprehensive plan. Should not be. I do not want or need a climate change. And D E I overall. Dictating how am I to live? What I can buy? What I can think? What I can eat? What source of energy or fuel to use? Or how far I can drive? And to where? I believe it's un-American.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer, we're right at the end of three minutes, please feel free to finish your thought if you like. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Jolene Jane.
Hi.
Am I saying that correctly?
Jolene Jane, yes, thank you. So I feel completely the opposite of this gentleman, I do believe in D E I and climate. So but that is. I wanted to bring your attention to the reasonable use exception. I think a couple of you already know about this. And. So to bring the rest of you up to speed, the reasonable use exception, if a person buys a property. Then they're allowed to build on it, even if it's on a wetland, if they can prove that it doesn't cause harm. And so I wanted to just bring this up, bring you up to speed, I had told the council meeting already that this is of concern. Lori Bodie also made comment that this is important, that the council will visit this. And. So a couple of years ago, a couple of you worked on the R U E to make it better. Because there are, there were developers who were abusing the system. And able to blame the neighbor for the flood and. Do all sorts of stuff, so there's a lot of, I have information about this, and so does the council. And so it's time to look at this R U B again. So there were compliance and accountability problems last time when you're fully staffed, and now there are still those two problems. I probably because it is understaffed, Mr. Hoffman has to manage the entire department and has a lot of things to do, and so. There are some challenges. To get all these things done, so. I called for a moratorium on all all R U Es, so you can help. The council and mayor figure out how to make a sustainable process where you can respect the codes of L F P. The people who live in it. And also follow the state code as well. I am the neighbor, and so I am in harms way, and there's possible landslide situation. So I'm gonna leave you with this question, a couple of questions, who should the burden be on when the developer buys a new property? Should it be on the neighbors to defend their safety, or should it be on the applicant? And so in this case, do you expect a citizen, a neighbor, to spend 1,000 hours? Talking to all sorts of scientists and engineers just to defend their property in terms of keeping themselves safe? And then my other question is, how does the city handle recommendations from regulatory agencies? Like the Washington Department of Ecology, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, how does that impact the decision? So Mr. Hoffman has given out the M D N S to say there's no problem with it, the hearing examiner can visit that. And so. Regulatory agencies. Have some other ideas on that, so how should that? Work into this, into decision? So that's all I have to say, and I have got a podcast around this particular issue and website. Pictures and videos, and you're able to come over also to see it, thank you.
Thank you, mister. I have no more names on the list, is there anyone else who would like to? Comment for the record? There are none. Thank you.
Director Hoffman, do you have any other comments to make, or would you like me to close?
No comments from staff, thank you.
Great, thank you, so with that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'd move to close the public hearing.
My second.
Okay, moving along on the agenda, we do have a section for public comments, so. We're not taking any online or any written comments, but if anyone in the room would love to speak. Okay. Great, then I will hand it over to our city council liaison for an update.
Thank you. I've had my first opportunity to speak, so I'm trying to think about what we've done over the last few meetings. We did hear from some of our. Community organizations as we prepare for our next annual budget. So we heard from some of our community members, Third Place Commons and Sherlock Arts this past Monday. And the week before, we heard from Hope Blank, and I'm drawing a blank on a couple of the others. So we are getting ready for our upcoming budget season, and so the staff and the mayor will present their proposed budget on September 12th. And then we will, as a council, look over it for the next few weeks with our goal of passing it by November. And we also look excitedly to the comp plan.
Yeah. So moving on to old business, like I mentioned just a few minutes ago, we had our open house back on July 16th, and I think all of us are. Eager to hear what the results were, any major takeaways that Christina, you and your team learned from that? We'd love to to hear a recap of how that event went.
Thank you, I've got a presentation that I will be sharing. Can everybody see that all right?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Sorry if you hear my dog barking in the background. So here we are tonight, August 13th, wrapping up planning commission's work on the comprehensive plan here in relatively short order. So tonight, I'm gonna talk through the open house and what we took away from that. As well as kind of sum up where we're at with the comp plan and what we're expecting in the next several weeks. The open house was held on July 16th at Third Place Commons, I think over the course of the event, we had around 45 to 50 attendees. It was a little bit difficult to keep track because of course it's a public, public space, so some people were just kind of drive-bys. But I think it was overall fairly well attended for this kind of event at the time on the day of the week that we chose. As you all know, we had some very topically focused stations. Transportation was really interesting, and this is one of the stations that drew quite a lot of participation. The. Probably unsurprising because this really is echoing what we heard from the survey, but the the big takeaways that we have from this are. A desire for investment in pedestrian safety improvements, there's a desire for. Better walking infrastructure, sidewalks, pathways, crossings. All of that good stuff to get people from where they live to where they wanna spend more time. People appreciate the existing bicycle facilities, but would like to see that network expanded. Similar with the transit network, just creating more opportunities for people to get places that doesn't involve driving a car. And then there's also a mention here on the board about. Controlling, controlling speed or or some kind of traffic calming, just something to help. With the with the safety and experiential aspects of. Non-motorized travel in Lake Forest Park. Housing was another big topic that we presented a lot of material on, and. We were really happy to hear that there was a lot of interest in expanding different kinds of housing options, different typologies. People really saw the benefit in serving a greater range of lifestyle choices beyond just the income. Brackets that that increasing options might serve, people. See a lot of value in being able to stay downsized and stay within their community. Or be a first-time home buyer or something to that effect. The. Four. Typologies that we saw or heard the most interest in were duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and cottage housing. People seemed to think that those would fit fairly effectively within Lake Forest Park's current residential fabric. And cottages in particular were interesting because of how they could fit a little more sensitively in some of the areas that are impacted by wetlands and streams and those buffer areas. And how the project could be designed to respond to those kinds of site constraints while protecting those environmental features. So and although there was interest in expanding the range of housing types allowed in Lake Forest Park. I note that there is still a very strong desire for. Any new development to be consistent with the current form and scale of the single-family residential neighborhoods. People still are really valuing the sense of place that is created in those neighborhoods with the kinds of single-family homes that are. Present now and wanna make sure that any higher density options will fit effectively within that context. Again, echoing what we heard from the survey are also concerns about. Tree canopy, increased density and traffic, people of course want to protect the existing tree canopy and expand that where possible. People are a little bit concerned about the potential impacts related to increasing density, which primarily relates to traffic and. Already people feeling unsafe walking or biking in portions of the city. These things are going to be really valuable. As we start to craft some of the implementing regulations, we'll know. What people are concerned about, and we can start to build some code interventions around those. Those issues. We asked a few questions about different kinds of commercial development opportunities, and there was a. A surprisingly strong interest in neighborhood-serving commercial when we asked that question. As you can see from the map, people identified the Ballenger Way corridor as a place where this desire could be met. And the. The local 104. Area that the intersection where that business is was held up as an example of the kinds of businesses that people would really like to see more of. In the community. And this was. This was again. Fairly, fairly gratifying to see how. How interested folks were in seeing a little bit more of this kind of development. By and large, we also saw kind of across the board in all of our stations, this strong preference to maintain and expand the tree canopy and protect the health of streams. Making sure that there are no increased hazards related to development in steep slope areas and all of those things, especially in the higher density development scenarios that. Might be considered with some of the new housing typologies or some of the, some of the density. That could, could potentially appear at town center if that were ever to redevelop. We do also. Recommend considering further education as we go through the the final stages of the update process and into implementation. The areas where we recommend more education are some reassurances that new development is subject to adopted zoning and critical areas requirements. I have noted the concern about the reasonable use exception, and I think that talking a little bit about. What that tool is, when it can be used, and what needs to be done to obtain a reasonable use exception and how those are administered and enforced. In the event that unintended impacts are created, I think that will be an important piece. Further explaining middle housing types and accessory dwelling units, these are being driven by state legislation. They do create opportunities for a greater range of lifestyles, a lot of people did value that, but compared to some of the feedback we got on the survey. I do think that additional education would be valuable in this, in this particular realm. And then some options or opportunities for active transportation improvements associated with new development or aligned with city investment. Through the capital improvement program or the transportation improvement program, or any grant funding opportunities that come from that. And then, of course, we will be embarking on the climate planning process to develop a full climate element, and. There will be the need for some ongoing education about why we're doing that, what needs to be included, and how it gets incorporated into the plan that we're working on right now. Are there any questions about the open house? Anything that any of the commissioners want to share about their experience at the open house?
I do have a question about the open house for all of you. You know, one of our standing questions is, was around equity. Did anybody have any conversations with anyone regards to the role of equity in the comp plan?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
But it was with my mother. Her responses were. Yeah.
Was she?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't. We don't look alike, so nobody. So, but I, you know, I kinda knew where her position was, which is alignment with certain things I've talked about before. I know we tried to ask one of your friends as well, and. Do you remember what some of his comments were? I think he was kinda neutral on the position, it was.
He was.
I got a sense more of not calling out specific. Ethnicities or races and keeping it a little bit more general is kind of the tone I got, is that how you? Perceived it as well, yeah, so those are really the only two intentional, but thank you for asking that, I know that has been our biggest. I think takeaway as as a commission where we're not all, you know, 100% in alignment on on the diversity language, so that's. Something I know we were hoping for more feedback on, but it's also not a topic that a lot of people are really wanting to shout from the rooftops. So. Did you have any conversation?
I didn't really, I, just kind of the same, I, I, I don't think that. It was a difficult question to, because we've been delving into that subject, right, so it's difficult to kind of give people the context of why we're asking that question. At least that was my experience.
Yeah.
So I didn't really get any clear answers, I don't think.
Lois, I know you had a lot of meaningful conversations with people, did you get a chance to approach the equity position? No.
No, I, yeah, no, I didn't, but that's, that's partially why I show up though, because just, just so people. Like me represent Lake Forest Park now, we're a new demographic or newer with, as we've talked about that in the past, but. Just, yeah, just show up so we could represent and, yeah, just be inclusive. But I do love that the state is mandating these things again. With truly the goal being to make a kinder, gentler community, one that is welcoming of all and is inclusive, and I think. All of your hearts are in the, the same spot, we just need to come together and 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 convey that in this document, thank you.
One comment that I did hear quite a bit to just balance out the, the preference to expand the tree canopy is that there was interest in updating. Urban forestry management plan.
Yes.
Something to help support the public in. Protecting the canopy or expanding the canopy, the tree canopy, so I just wanna point that out, that that was a common. Conversation that I was engaged in it that during the open house.
I think Christina also, another topic that she kinda reported on, but I did hear from people I wasn't related to. Was just the the desire for that single-family home style, which I think is. You know, that's a topic that this commission has talked about too, about wanting to have diversity and in sizes of homes that can reach different kind of income levels. And again, that's such a small sample of who we talked to, but that desire to keep the large lot, single-family home was something that did come up a couple of times.
Yeah, I felt like the majority of people I talked to were there to. Understand the housing.
Any other comments on the open house?
Can I just add something? You know, most of the subject of my conversations with people revolved around. Just in informing them that the house bills were a huge part of our. And and the climate action legislation that's come down from the state, I don't think people realize that that was something that came as a surprise to. The folks that I talked to, if I could give that feedback.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
That's an excellent point, excellent point too, is that. We're not just bringing up certain elements because they feel good to us, it's because they are required. Elements that we have to have, the nice pieces that as a commission we're able to talk about. You know, to what degree do we adopt them, and it sounds, you know, like working with the team that we have a little bit of flexibility, not. Not to the point whether you do it or don't do it, it's just how can you frame that language? But we are, we are required to have certain elements baked into the comp plan, so I think that that was really good call out, Lois, because there's that education piece that that not all people are aware of. Just for the record, Christina, you and your team, thank you for putting that together. That was a lot of work, and you had to do it in such a short order, so do appreciate you doing that and capturing that feedback and. Creating an environment for us to just focus on engaging with people that showed up, so thank you for that.
Thank you all for attending and making it such a great event, it was lovely to have so many people there. Representing the project and the work that has been done so far, so thank, thank you all, everyone who came. Okay, if there are no other questions. Okay, if there are no other questions, comments or other related to the open house, then I will move on to next steps for the draft comprehensive plan. So the current iteration of the comp plan, we, we rolled out a kind of rough review copy with the open house. We got feedback from some of the commissioners as well as the tree board, park board and police department. And a revised version was posted on the project website, I believe it was last Friday. Mark, you could probably confirm that.
He said, yep, correct.
Great. So that, the version that's posted online is shown in track changes. You can see what, what has been addressed since that draft was, was sent out to you all. We are still anticipating some additional review comments from planning commissioners. We also will be looking to incorporate any updates from the public comments that we received tonight. We also recognize that there's still a little bit more work to clean up some of the placeholders. We are still working with Public Works on obtaining the last data related to capital facilities, utilities and transportation. And then once we've got kind of the policy language firmed up, we'll be adding current graphics and photos. And the reason why that's coming a little bit later is that we don't want to spend a lot of time reformatting when we know that text is likely to still change somewhat. But we will, we do have that on our to do list and we will get those things taken care of. We are also planning a trip up to Lake Forest Park to take some more current photos. But again, open invitation, if you have a photo of Lake Forest Park anywhere in the city or people enjoying time in the city, please submit it. I would love to include it in the comprehensive plan that goes for anybody on the planning commission as well as anybody else who has photos of Lake Forest Park that they would love to include in the comprehensive plan. Next steps look like this. So we will be working the rest of this week to incorporate comments. Depending on the quantity and extent of comments we receive and when we receive them from planning commissioners, we are tentatively expecting to have that done this Friday in time to have an updated draft available before the city council briefing next week. And then looking at having the implementation strategy where we moved all of the implementation actions from the old version of the comp plan as well as the final version of the recommendation in either late August or in, in any event, no later than your next regular meeting in September. Transition to city council really begins on Monday. So there will be a briefing that Mark will be providing to the city council. And then they'll be able to dig in at their meetings following that beginning, either later in August or in September. And that brings me to the end of my presentation.
So I have a question that might be better for Mark perhaps. Can you perhaps just for the public who may watch this recording or those who are here tonight, just describe what the council's process generally will look like? Kind of timeline opportunities for the public to weigh in again.
Thank you, Commissioner Kajic. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. The two-year effort is nearing completion, thanks to your efforts. It was originally envisioned in January to be two parts. Half the year at planning commission, half the year at city council. The reason being that this type of action or adoption of a comp plan legislative, the planning commission sits as the body that makes a recommendation. That's where we're at right now. The city council sits as the decision maker in this type two category. So with that switch, we have an opportunity to overlap. We need to begin the review process and discussion at city council so that they can meet the Growth Management Act deadline for King County cities and the county of December 31st, 2024. We're on track for that. The first touch, as Christina mentioned, is next Monday night, which is a briefing. What are we doing? Where are we at? What's been accomplished? What comes next? We'll, we'll start that discussion with city council and then mixed in with budget as many touches with the document, the recommended document from the commission as needed. The deadline is December 31st. There's, there are, when I refer to them as impacts, if we don't pass it, but they're relatively minor in this case. We're not eligible for grants. We're subject to appeals, the growth management hearings work, but those take time and none of those are anticipated. So the schedule from August through December is to work with the city council to at the very least relay the comments and the sentiments and the recommendation of planning commission as best we can. And that transition starts and then we take it from there, ideally in December. And adopting action is taken in some form, doesn't have to exactly be the recommended form. All the materials and amendments, revisions and discussions will be forwarded to the city council and then we'll go from there. That's all I have to say on that subject. The other subject is the planning commission needs to transition to other work also related to the comprehensive plan, but that, that's not this agenda item. Thank you.
Can you also address too, just one more time, I know we've done this in the past meeting, but now that we have concluded comments by way of survey in person and also by public hearing, if we as a commission do not come to a consensus on certain topics, can you address again how, how we would formalize that in terms of communicating it to the city council?
The, the, the first avenue is to try and reach consensus. There's nothing better than, you know, all of the nine minds melding together and having a consensus. It's not required. What's required is to forward or frame the issues. So if there is a division on a particular issue, the issue needs to go forward in some form. And then staff would frame it. The commission still sits in a role of being able to come to council meetings and discuss, you know, what were your thoughts on an individual issue? And both sides of that issue would be discussed. It's there, available for the council to essentially sit as a decision maker and lend their expertise, their elected perspective and make that decision, make that final recommendation. They can amend what is here.
Thank you. Any questions amongst the commission about that process, kind of where we're at, where we're going?
Just to follow up, question to your question. Are we clear what those open items are? That we need, might need to come to some consensus about or word over to the city council members?
Yeah, I mean, I think from what our call, obviously the equity issue was, was one we've spent a lot of time on. Are there any other ones that people recall? Okay, the equity issue.
Yeah.
Christina was trying to talk, I think.
Sorry about that. The, the equity language is really the only one that I've been tracking as a, as lacking consensus.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions to the questions to the question?
At this point.
Okay, cool.
At least not for me. If I may, one, add one more category as the commission moves on to other work efforts, there's always the opportunity for a question to be asked by the city council back at a regular or special finding commission, meaning for clarity, for further deliberation, further discussion. But that, it just becomes more time sensitive as we get closer to December.
So how will we kind of practically go about doing that? Are we going to open that up at another meeting or are we all submitting? I, I guess I would.
Yeah, how, how do we put a point on it?
Yeah.
So I'll look to you for any specific action, but I think kind of our next steps were, you guys want to close it by the 16th, which there are still, probably half of the commission still has comments to share. And then, then Christine and her team would have a more final version. And then are we just kind of highlighting that area where we don't have the consensus? And then that's what we move forward with or how does that look like? What does that look like?
The, the dates Christina presented are the, the optimistic timeline.
Estimated.
And the asterisks are the, the more likely. The discussion we had is that you have a regular meeting coming up in September and that staff can begin a transition at city council prior to that independently, because there's so much background, there's so much information to bring forward. And we have a current working draft, takes time to have a council member immerse in it and really understand where we're at. So that overlap allows the commission the flexibility to decide. Do you want a special meeting in late August? Are you available? Or would you like to reserve time to fully further review the document, provide comments, allow SCJ time to make those comments incorporated in some fashion? And then use the September meeting for your formal recommendation. If you do that, the time is available to you. And by motion, while you're deliberating on the recommendation, can include what you would like to do with issues such as equity. What is the, the collective direction? How do you want it to be brought up to city council? Doesn't mean that you need, you know, like a jury to be unanimous that night, but we would appreciate a motion that kind of frames what you would like us to present to the city council for that issue.
I've also seen commissions present like a cover letter that outlines the, the different positions, whether it's two or three on any specific issue. That's something that would be authored by the commissioners who advocate for those positions. But that's, that's something that you could provide as kind of supplemental to or introducing your recommendation and kind of where you're looking for a city council to make a final determination.
Just to add a little volume, I know when we were talking about a potential special meeting, which I know is kind of like a four-letter word for this group after all those. The, the idea was that we didn't know what we were going to expect from the public hearing. And if there was a lot of different topics for us to consider and to work through as a commission, then that would be appropriate and probably time well spent to have a special meeting. But it sounds like, you know, the two issues that have come up, those are not shocking to any of us here. There are things that we've debated and talked about as well. So I guess I would put the question out, out to you guys. Are you, how would you like to move forward? You know, again, we still owe some more comments to Christina to incorporate. There's no surprises on to what our number one issue is or are the one topic that we've been discussing. Do you guys feel that it's warranted to have a special meeting to kind of then formalize our position? Or would you like to have our next meeting in September and do it then? Yes, Lois.
I like the idea of a cover letter. You know, I think if, if commissioners felt very strongly, I think it would make sense just to, to append a cover letter for simplicity sake. So the council could then consider, you know, the different positions. If that's a efficiency suggestion.
Thank you.
I would, I would support that approach. I mean, I'm sure we could have a special meeting and discuss further. And I, I don't object to that per se, but I think we have talked about some of these issues in depth. And I would want to make sure that the council is aware of what the different sort of perspectives are. And I think we can accomplish that through some shared drafting of a letter. I think maybe the chair and I would support as vice chair. We could work on that and solicit input from our, the rest of the commission to make sure that we reflect the, the different perspectives in that letter. But I, I don't know that it necessarily merits a, a full special meeting at this time. We've got a lot to do, but that's, that's my perspective and I'm open to any other suggestions as well.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that too.
The cover letter.
That will be fine.
Okay, so cover letter, draft maybe, and then it's obviously circulated amongst this group. We have to have consensus on that letter that we would then produce for you to share with the city council. And then the timeline around that, is that something that you'd want prior to September? Or do we revert back to the desired timeline table?
It, it doesn't have to fit the desired timeline, but it should be simultaneous or accompanying your, your recommendation. So whatever moment you make a recommendation would be the final, hopefully the final touch on that draft. And then we would transmit the record with the, the letter with the record. There's also the opportunity for commissioners to physically attend city council on that specific issue. But I like the idea of the letter because the, the process I'd least like is for you to tell staff to decipher what the conversation was, in our words, and then convey it to city council. That seems the riskiest, least likely to get it right.
So would it make sense to you, Mr. Hoffman, if we strove to have a letter that we at least collectively agree on in time for us to sort of approve that letter September 10th? Or should it be, does that make sense so that we could then say, here's our last touch? And here's a letter that conveys our thoughts on, you know, one or two key issues that we've struggled to come to full consensus on, does that make sense?
It, it does, and it'd be ideal. That way the, whatever motions you make and the recommendation include that issue in that letter and we move forward.
Got it. Thank you.
So is this something that we're confirming in our September meeting then? I would suggest to get drafted as soon as possible. Feels like tomorrow. But the drafting and then the circulation, this is a legislative item. You've done extensive amount of work. You can do that via email, not with a serial meeting, but transparently through the chair and vice chair. So the drafting or the initial draft is the key and then commenting into the chair. And then whoever staff can help circulate or, or capture or coordinate where, where. We just don't want to be responsible for the words. We wanted to reflect your, your individual thoughts so that by September 10th, that document can go forward as the thoughts of the commission, even though there are various perspectives represented in it.
We, it sounds like we, we will certainly draft a letter. I would also push out to the rest of you, if you have any short sentences or any kind of capture that you want to send us to include, you know, we'll, we'll work through those to incorporate in the letter so we can get a really good draft that first go. You all have been very great about sharing your positions eloquently. So if you wouldn't mind summarizing something that you feel really needs to come through that letter, we would certainly incorporate that. And then we will work together on getting a draft out. I won't commit to a date at this moment, but as soon as possible, you know, hopefully in the next week or week and a half. So if we could hear comments from you guys back, today's Tuesday, if we could have something by Friday, that would be fabulous.
The end of the weekend, perhaps if people can't fit it into their work.
Yep, or end of the week.
So that's under it.
Yep.
And Mr. Hoffman, we'll, we'll look for you to keep us within the bounds of how we communicate correctly about something like this without having meetings and quorums and things. So we'll just, we'll work with you to make sure that we're following the, following the rules.
I, I would, and it is legislative, but it's policy. So there, there are significantly less rules on how you operate. But the, the overriding policy is that the city's work should be in the light of day, very transparent in this setting. So if we just simply avoid serial emails and a meeting that takes place out in the community via email or even physically getting together, I think we easily achieve that. So I always say it's through the chair. So if you have comments, you, you don't need to reply all. You, you know, you don't need to debate. We could save the debate and discussion until you're all together. You you know, you don't need to debate. We could save the debate and discussion until you're all together, but through the chair that. Consensus and that draft can be developed.
So i- i- again, if you guys could send some comments or something in particular you'd like reflected or incorporated by the end of this week, Sunday, that'd be great. The idea is that. We will produce an initial draft sometime next week. And then. We will have um hopefully have a final version in September to adopt and to share along again with the recommendations that we do have. Lois, did you have some additional thoughts or is that you just high fiving us?
Uh, no, I'm actually just typing a draft letter. I'll send you by tonight's meeting and then um hopefully that'll get the ball rolling.
Cool, thank you. Oh, yes.
John Lebo, uh, city council liaison. Uh, this has been a great discussion. So one of the things that we're really interested in is when you. Produce the cover letter with the recommendation is to talk about what you've done. And talk about the pride in which you and the community have put this together. Because this has been a really tremendous effort that will um benefit all of us. And so I think coming through um having to say. The involvement of the you in developing this as well as the public process. So if you could describe. We met twenty-four times over the last eight months and we had so much public involvement with open houses, surveys. It helps us understand the process that you went through because we all recognize. How much time and effort goes into producing this? And you should be recognized and appreciated for that effort, both by the council as well as the citizens. So. It's great to put that into the letter. It's also uh would be delightful to have you highlight the things that you're most proud of or that you want to bring to council attention. So if there are new things that may have occurred uh from the last comp plan that you want to highlight in a positive way. And what we're interested in is that if you have a different perspective on a particular item, we are interested in those perspectives. It doesn't, it's. The perspective is what's important, not the unanimity of what you've done. Consensus is great, but we recognize different perspectives have different thoughts and have equal value. And so as decision makers, it's helpful for us to understand what those perspect- perspectives and thoughts are. And you can express that in a letter. We would also encourage you to come and talk with us. And schedule an opportunity to highlight those things again, both positive and different perspectives. So think of this as an opportunity. Um, all ideas are good ideas and um we very much appreciate all the work that you've done to put this together. So. Have that come through in your letter and in your discussions.
Thank you. Any other comments to wrap up discussion around the cop plan? Hey. Talk about new business. Gosh, so we know we're gonna be talking about middle housing next, but um. You know, as we've talked about so many things on the comp plan, you know, different items of is interest have come up that we've kind of flagged and said, oh, let's be sure to touch on this. Once we're done with cop plan. And we're kind of getting to that point now where um in September, we have the opportunity to start talking about what is the next. Um, item that we want to embark upon and again, want to get the full. Uh, ideas, full spectrum from this group here and what are some pressing issues and then ultimately I'll decide collectively what we want to to tackle next. Um, so again, want to flag that as something that um you're thinking about now and I guess I can open it up if anybody has something that you want to put in the record. That we can kind of marinate on over the next couple of weeks and and ultimately figure out what item we want to address. Um, you know, we've talked a lot about expansion of economic development, how what does that look like? Uh, more specifically, the ruled regulations, we've talked about. How can we get experts in that do build homes and what challenges do they face? How can we adjust some of our laws that maybe make it more friendly for uh the development? Um, obviously, RUEs were brought up, which we've spent time on recently. Um. Update on the forest management plan. So a lot of different topics, but I'll take a pause there to see if. We want to maybe work on a list and think about over the next couple of weeks, maybe engage with neighbors, friends, anyone that wants to talk to us about. Uh, important topics. This is kind of now our our time to figure out what the landscape of the next couple of months look like.
So I just want to emphasize um. Uh, the uh, a- actually, all of those items I I have interest in, right? Um, but I think one of the interests, one of my biggest interests is the the economic development piece.
Yep.
Um, how can we uh assist? Like Forest Park and becoming more of a a a community that can support business, small businesses, um, whatever that looks like.
Thank you.
I I would second that and I think we could do a similar format where we have small business owners come in and say. You know, what have what have been the challenges? What are the things that the city can actually do? And it would just be. I think it would be really informative and to us to.
Yeah.
I would love to do that. That would be really. Good.
I I also very much agree with that too.
You know, I'll chime in that and I made a few of these comments in the comments that I submitted for the comp plan that I feel like in two areas, one. Being sort of business, you know, development and the other is. Um, more sort of housing and mixed use development, especially on the southern gateway. There I I just sense that we need a really. Solid review of what the rules we have and of the rules we have in place and what's stopping. Um, development from coming into Lake Forest Park because it's it's pretty uh. Sort of stark how much is happening in some of our neighboring cities. We've got a southern gateway. Plan and code to go with it. And apart from the residential piece that happened there, almost nothing has happened in the decade since that plan was passed. Meanwhile, there's a lot going on in Seattle, a lot going on in Kenmore and Bothell. So. I think there's there's, I'd really like to have us dig into and get some help understanding what we might need to change. Um, in our code. As a follow up to this comp plan to actually promote some of the things that we've said for a long time that we'd like to see more of. So. Those are the the, those are the kind of the biggies for me and what's stopping those types of um. Uh, developments and improvements from happening in Lake Forest. And I think Lois has a hand up, so I just want to note that, but I don't know if she actually has her hand up. Here we go.
No.
Bye bye.
All right, sorry, no. Um, I I just. I do want to add though that I hope the the commission would still consider, um, you know. Strengthening the language in that com plan and and endorsing the the consideration of a a sub area study. Or or something of that nature of expanding the commercial zone within the city. I feel very strongly that we have been so solely focused and and there's nothing wrong with being um wanting a gathering space, the need and the desire is there, but. Our focus of attention is really on one developer, one player, and unfortunately, they own multiple businesses within our commercial zone, but. Uh, I think Southern Gateway, the problem with that is we are competing, the vibrancy of of a a local neighborhood that we love. Does incorporate multimodal transportation, uh, something along the lines of zero foot setbacks where buildings are. Suddenly close up to the 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 property line where the the sidewalk would be, so it gives it kind of this sense of scale. And all those key elements, those design elements are missing in the southern gateway area. So. Again, if you look at SR one oh four, though, you've got um conversely, you have uh two lanes of blacktop and sometimes four. Uh, but the majority of, you know, it's a much narrower roadway, so it makes sense to to consider expanding the commercial profile of the city. Turning our gaze away from Merlot Geyer and building something beautiful, encouraging uh the council member, you have the power of the pen. Uh, and perhaps we can explore that topic. Um, uh, so I I just really wanted to express that here that that, uh, you know. That the wish lists uh will stay wish lists until we give the city um a an alternative funding source. And uh wanting it it out of squeezing it out of single, uh, the the. Residential zoning that we have um is is just not going to produce anything. We've tried to do the the proposition which didn't pass, but. But just handing the the power over to the city, uh, as small as it might be. Uh, but starting to build something beautiful in a in a different commercial zone. Inviting new players, not just one Merlot Geyer, but inviting multiple players. But the power of the the pen to start creating the landscape to invite that, I think, is is a good first start. I would like to say the second issue that I would like to mention is. Uh, uh, many of the documents that we have are outdated. Uh, in the comp plan, we referenced, um. You know, multiple documents that were from twenty ten and and even before. Uh, the new tree canopy report that came out, but I would like to also point out that it's doing great, but we do need to consider. I know that the tree board exists. I know some of you have mentioned that. I I understand, but perhaps planning commission would consider collaborating. With the tree board to fix it for the residents. Um, those are the only two big, big points I wanted to throw in for consideration by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Okay.
Does Melissa have? Any comments?
No, I support all of those.
No shortage of issues, huh?
No.
Okay, so I'm I'm hearing a lot on economic development, um, small business. You'd mentioned mixed use development. Um, Lois heard you on maybe updating some documents, maybe that's in collaboration with the tree board. But also an emphasis, sorry too, to go back on the economic development, but also commercial development. Uh, anybody have anything else new?
The, you know, we did have a pretty lengthy conversation. I don't, I don't remember when it was back in November, December about the RUE.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that we suggested doing is creating some sort of um. I don't know, some sort of uh. Easy document for pe- the community to understand what is the process, what does it mean, you know, when somebody is faced with. A neighbor in the in the neighborhood developing their land, what do the, what do the neighbors need to know? You know, do you all remember that conversation?
I I vaguely remember that. I remember the comment saying, well, all the information's out there, which is true, but then from the end user, if you're not savvy, it's very hard to. Marry the documents and what next step. So I I do, that does sound familiar.
Yeah, so maybe we could just come back to that conversation. Um, or I just, I would suggest that we just put down the list to revisit that. Conversation about RUEs.
Uh, RUEs, okay. Okay, I have some notes here. I think also too, I do like um. What you had shared, Yanni, about going back and learning about the rules and the development again too, because I'm sure none of us have those committed to memory. And um, having that education basis is incredibly necessary and I think that's where we would kind of lean on you. Mark and your team for for some help with the education too. Um, but. You know, over the next couple of weeks, let's refine more. What topic we want to, I think with the idea of September, we can formally talk about where we want to go. Um, so not to give you another set of homework, but again, we've kind of restated what we're all talking about right now, but if something else comes to mind or if. Anyone that's not here has an item that they want to bring, um. What we can do is, we meaning, um, you and I, we can create a short list and kind of capture what we've talked about. And then maybe we can formally um at our next meeting, say this is where we want to go and work on a roadmap for that, if that works for everyone.
It was also my understanding that we had additional comprehensive plan work, the environmental element. Are we not jumping straight into that as well?
The middle housing.
The the part that you are jumping straight into is the middle housing development regulations.
Okay.
Um, the policy around housing is in this draft, but it's policy by June. The end of June next year, the city needs to have adopted development regulations implementing House Bill twelve twenty and eleven ten. So those development regulations and draft ordinances will be before you. The other part of that is the commerce grant for the climate element. That's going to be an annual docketing effort in twenty twenty five. Where we formed a climate policy advisory team to take that on, three planning commissioners. Three uh climate action committee members and a member of the tree board. To work with a consultant and achieve that, but that. Product needs to come back or that that end result review draft element needs to come back to the planning commission. Uh, and and the way the contract and the commerce grant are worded, we need a re- review draft by June of next year. There's no um negative downside about not having it adopted by June, but the development regulations has a downside. So that would say that's the highest priority and then the policy advisory team coming back to inform you for your. Uh, annual complaint update, this element or one and two. And then a- any other list that you would like to pursue.
I'd like to just uh mention one kind of narrower topic for future. Uh, maybe some reporting from staff. Um, this kind of came to my attention as I was reviewing the call plan, especially volume two. Around some of the transportation issues and how Perkins Way was kind of relegated to. You know, second level priority for dealing with uh things like pedestrian and bicycle improvements and so forth. We're seventeen days away from having a light rail station at one eighty fifth and I five. Um, for those of us who live kind of in this one seventy eighth Perkins part of town. I'll just tell you, more people take Perkins than one seventy eighth if they're going to go to that new light rail station. We now have twenty-four seven speed cameras on one seventy eighth. That's going to send even more people racing up Perkins. Where many of us walk and walk our dogs and all that. And I just, I I I'm truly worried about the safety of that road. And what's going to happen as people are rushing to get to the light rail station. Um, I know we've, we try to sort of direct people to one seventy eighth. It's a wider street and all that, but anybody who drives. That street knows when you get up to the top, it's completely awkward to get to light rail from one seventy eighth. Whereas from Perkins, it's like a straight shot. Um. I'd like to hear how it is that we. Update priorities for where we're dealing with safety and traffic calming and things like that. Um, because somebody. Is very likely to get run over on Perkins with um. The increased kind of rush hour traffic to get to that train that's eight minutes apart going up Perkins. So. That's not at at its core necessarily a planning commission issue, but I'd like to understand how we modify over time, the priorities in our transportation planning. Because we're going to have some issues, we're going to have some problems on Perkins. It's been talked about for fifteen years, how. Maybe it should be one way, maybe it should be a pedestrian road, maybe it all these things and nothing gets done. All we do is patch some potholes on it. So I'd like to hear more about how we can accelerate. Safety improvements on Perkins in light of the new light rail opening on August thirtieth.
Perhaps we can broaden that. That conversation, not only look at Perkins, but perhaps there's some other locations.
Oh, absolutely. That's just the one that is foremost in my head, because if if you, if you were to do Google Maps or something from here to the new light rail. It'll probably send you up Perkins, not one seventy eighth. Unless it's really wrong, because it 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 is faster, it is more direct, it's easier to get there, so. Thank you.
Yeah. We'll incorporate that into to our list. Awesome, thanks. Any other comments under new business, anyone? Great. Transition to reports and announcements. Do you have anything to share with us? Anyone? I'm looking at you, Mark.
Uh, oh, there's so much in my head. I don't have anything to share tonight, other than we're working on an awful lot.
That's fair. Um, any citizen comments? Oh, a- any, oh, sorry, before we go there, Melissa, you had something to share?
Well, when when Yanni was talking about one seventy eighth, I was just going to also suggest we add fortieth place. Until that.
Right.
That is also a huge cut through. Um, I live on fortieth place. Um, we live a little bit up fortieth place and I can tell you. Even now, like traffic backs up to where I can't even get out of my driveway in the morning, because it's. That popular is a cut through. I mean, people speed on it a lot and it's going to be another one of those streets that when the light rail. Station goes in, if there's, you know. It it's just, it's already an issue, so.
Great, thanks, Melissa. Okay, um, any citizen comments? Please, yes. Yes?
Okay, well, I, I understand that you're really concerned about the grant monies because the city Lake Forest Park. Is good at bidding for grant monies. Given the new. Lakefront park. Multi millions of dollars, it's going to cost us. Probably fourteen million dollars before it's done. But. So I know what your concerns are. If you go against the state, which is causing all this mess right now, causing all these problems. You lose grant monies. So thanks for that information. I appreciate that. As far as trees go. I can't stand trees in the middle of a highway. And the major arterial trees and plants. And when they try and maintain it, it blocks traffic, makes traffic worse, causes more accidents. Why do that? And about multiple family buildings. The more you put in a neighborhood like the small city of Lake Forest Park, you're going to increase traffic. You're going to increase problems. That's common sense. So. I suggest that you look at these things. You know, more carefully. And really consider the impact of the taxpayers of this city who have homes. Even the elderly who have homes and are being overtaxed. So add that to your. Goals. To help, to help seniors, but to help them keep their homes so they don't get taxed out of them. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you. Okay, next topic is agenda for next meeting, which I think we've pretty well ironed out.
While we have Christina, the, other than the topic of what topics would you like to discuss going forward? The timeline is becoming critical on middle housing. So Christina and I will start talking about what that first step is. But the, the primary goal is to move the recommendation on the comprehensive plan update forward. Once we achieve that, it needs to quickly be followed by middle housing development regulations and what the commission needs. Likely is what's in the code right now, what are the house bills and a little bit of background. Goes to the education piece, piece for the public. So what I would like to do in preparation for September is maybe. Have the flexibility to include an agenda item to start that in some meaningful way.
Any issues, comments, thoughts on that?
Makes sense.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else that nobody wants to bring up? Yes, Christina. You're on mute. Or you're not on mute, but we can't hear you.
My headset and my computer like don't talk to each other with the mute, so one of them will say I'm off mute and I won't anyway. Sorry about that. So just on the topic of getting to a final recommendation. There are still some folks that have not submitted review comments. I guess I would just throw out a plea for as soon as possible. You know what my aspirational schedule is. So. Please, whatever you can do to get those submitted or at least let. Mark know when they might be coming so that I can plan around that.
Thank you.
And to tag on to that. If possible, if you have no further comments, also let me know so that I can coordinate with Christina that the recommended draft is ready. As opposed to not knowing as we get into packet. And producing the recommended draft, doing the website and, and kind of. Preparing for that motion or series of motions. So if you, if, if you feel confident that it's captured and you have no further comments, we would also like to hear that. And through the chair, back to reports and announcements, I have, I do have one that might be helpful. And not wait for September, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Climate Policy Advisory Team. Somewhere in the next week or two, I'm hoping to reach out to the three funding commission members. And the tree board, CIC. And form a step in September. If that is a, an initial meeting, electing chair and vice chair, that'd be very productive. The announcement or the update is that we completed the RFQ. We received seven submittals. We interviewed and received presentations for four. All seven were highly qualified. The scope is pretty clear, the scope for the commerce grant and what the task is. All seven could have done it. It was difficult to then. Interview the four and further rank those, but we did. Subcommittee of Corey Roach, I and Tracy Furutani, council member Furutani. And then blindly, we all submitted our rankings of those four and we had a consensus number one, barely. But it was unanimous. And so we are looking to negotiate a contract. Draft contract and present that to city council. First meeting in September. In preparation of that or an optimism of that, we would like to take a first step with the climate policy advisory team. I know that it only affects three commissioners, but we would like you all to be aware. And then focus with those three on emails, setting up that initial meeting. Hopefully mid-September, not in conflict with any other night meeting or any other duty you may have. So it'll be a challenge, but it'd be a nice start. The consultant. Will be informed right after the contract is authorized. And when. But until then, we won't know what their participation will be and when. But we would, we would like to start with the. Task force and be better prepared, October, November, December are quickly coming. And any work we can do. Then. Saves time for the greenhouse gas and resiliency sub elements, which are huge. And then January through March, reporting back to the commission. So I thought I'd let you know that's our plan for September.
Thank you.
Any other comments for the good of the order? You all want to go home? Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
Subdued.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Thanks you guys for joining online and thanks Christina. We'll see you guys in September and we'll be in touch via email. Thank you.
Thank you.